All right, well, welcome, 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 welcome. I just want to thank you all so much again for joining us. We want to just express our deep gratitude to you for taking time out of your busy evenings to be here with us tonight to tune in here on Zoom and on Facebook for our District Two School Board Candidate Forum. As a reminder, District Two represents schools, our public schools in the Beeches area, and we appreciate you for spending your evening with us demonstrating your commitment to public education and to our city. If you're joining us on Facebook, I want to welcome you to use the chat function now to help us get this information out to a broader audience. It's very important that voters are informed when they head to the polls in the next couple of months. My name is Rachel Tutwiler-Forten for anyone. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting yet, and I serve as the President of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund. I am so thrilled tonight to be joined by my journalist co-moderator Melanie Lawson. Melanie is the award-winning anchor of The Morning Show on Channel Four, and she is one of our community's leading journalists covering local education. I want to note for you that the Jacksonville Public Education Fund does not endorse any candidate and has since its inception offered these school board forums as a way of providing the opportunity for voters to learn more about the candidates running for school board. We invited all candidates to participate, and on the webinar with us tonight thus far is Elizabeth Anderson. The other candidate running for District Two is April Carney. Tonight, before we begin, I want to start by sharing our ground rules for the evening. For the candidates joining us, we'll start with brief introductions. We'll start by asking Ms. Anderson in two minutes to please introduce herself, and then we'll transition to the question portion of the evening. We want to ask that you keep your answers brief, so we can get to as many questions as possible this evening. I know that we have received many questions from folks who registered for the webinar, and I expect we'll have many more coming in. In fact, they already are as the evening progresses. I want to take some time, we'll take some time tonight for those listening in live at the end of the questioning by Melanie and myself. So I want to invite you to please submit your questions in the chat function on Zoom and in the comments section on Facebook. We are monitoring in both places, and we're going to do our best to get through as many questions as possible. But please know that we may not be able to get through all of the questions. At the end of the forum, Ms. Anderson and Ms. Carney, if she's able to join us, will have two minutes to make a closing statement. Some of the topics on the agenda to look out for this evening are the millage rate referendum, the role of the school board, literacy scores, equity, and student support, teacher retention, and parent and caregiver engagement. I also want to remind you of some important election information before we begin. The primary election will be held on Tuesday, August 23, with early voting happening from August 8 through the 21st. You have until July 25 to register to vote if you have not already done so, and you still have time to sign up for a mail ballot if you wish to as well. You can do this at duvalelections.com up to 10 days before the election. I also want to let you know that we're going to be voting on the one-mill increase in property taxes to fund teacher compensation and for other important educational purposes. We've had one forum already on that issue, and we invite you to view our advocacy center at jaxpeff.org for more information. We will host a second referendum on the millage rate increase on July the 21st. So I definitely want to encourage you to sign up for that as well. You can also register for that on the JPEF website. Before we dive in, I just want to take a minute to thank the candidates for running for office and also for being here this evening. The school board elections provide the community with an important opportunity to engage with public education, and we're grateful for the candidates for taking the time tonight to speak directly to the voters and for their interest in public service. I also want to thank again Melanie Lawson, our journalist co-moderator for this evening. We so appreciate you being here, Melanie.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And with that, I am going to start with the introductions and invite Liz Anderson, and we'll stay tuned to see if Ms. Carney is able to join us. But Ms. Anderson, would you take up the two minutes to introduce yourself, and then we'll turn to our questions?
Sure. Thank you so much, Rachel, and thank you, JPEF, for continuing to be good partners with Duval County Public Schools and allowing the voters this opportunity to kind of get to know us as candidates. I am a licensed mental health counselor, a former educator, a mom, a small business owner, and I have had the great honor and privilege of serving District Two since 2018. Before that, I was a community mental health therapist. I saw students in home and in school and helped children achieve their full potential. And before becoming a community health, mental health therapist, I was a high school English teacher. So I love doing that work, but what I loved most about it was spending time with students, and it made an easy transition for me into the counseling world where I continue to specialize in my private practice in teens and parenting. I am grateful for you allowing us this opportunity to direct, directly connect with our constituency, and I'm disappointed that my opponent isn't able to be here tonight. I think that this is a really important race. The school board is one of those positions that's really critical for us to be able to elect members of our own community that represent our vision and our voice, and it's important that we had this time to to connect with folks, and they're able to see that we have them and children and public education at the forefront of all of our discussions and decision-making, and that we're not trying to put politics over children.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's get started with our questions, and again, keep those questions coming. If you do have things that you do want to know about, put them in the chat, and then also there online as well. So we're going to start with the issue mentioned earlier by Rachel about the referendum to raise the millage rate and also teacher recruitment and retention, certainly an issue not just in Duval County, but in every county and honestly all over the country. So what is your position on the referendum? And if you are opposed or if this referendum fails, what do you propose instead to solve this teacher shortage that we're having here in Duval County?
Thanks, Melanie. So you know, I think that the millage referendum at this moment in time is a really tough one, right? People are struggling, and we have a lot of uncertainty in the markets with inflation and a variety of financial impacts for many people. So I really believe that what is great about this being on the ballot is allowing the voters the opportunity to win. I can tell you that I know that we have an issue. We are struggling to keep teachers in our classrooms, highly qualified professional educators in our classrooms, and a lot of that has to do with paying them a professional respectable wage. And we also need to be able to recruit teachers. We know that wages across private industry and across the country have continued to increase and to be able to meet the demands of inflation in our communities, but the public school system and public education, we don't have that same flexibility. So when we need to look at paying our staff more money to meet the demands of the economy, we have to go back to the voters. That's the beauty of having a representative government where you get to say whether or not you're willing to pay a little bit more to make sure that our kids have highly qualified professional educators in the classroom. So I certainly would encourage everyone to do their homework and make a decision that feels good for them at the ballot on what they want to invest in.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So just kind of building on the conversation about retaining and recruiting teachers, research does show us that teachers are the number one most important factor in our schools for student learning. We also know that a diverse teaching workforce can improve outcomes for students, and our teacher workforce isn't as diverse as the student body. What can DCPS do to recruit and retain a high-quality and diverse teaching force?
So I think that the county is already doing a lot of really great things. We are working with colleges and universities across the country, but also specifically HBCUs to make sure that we are recruiting a diverse workforce. We have created a teacher pipeline program just to help train high school students and get them some experience in educating. We've got a great partnership with Reed USA, and high school students are being hired to be tutors, and a lot of them are saying that they're interested in continuing because they see the immediate return and reward in what it is to help move a young person forward and help them achieve academic success. So those are some ways that I think that we are already working. We've got great support in for folks trying to take tests. We've got to pass certification exams. We've partnered with retired teachers to come in and be mentors for folks. I think those are all great ways to continue recruiting. We've also worked with some contract staffing organizations to bring in more diversity. So we've got a couple of different ways that we bring folks in. Teach for America continues to serve our younger students and a variety of ways that we are working to fill the gap, not only of shortage, but also to make sure that our workforce is diverse. I think the other thing that we need to be looking at is making sure, you know, kind of back to the millage question and conversation, you know, are the wages, benefits, and conditions that we ask our staff to work in respectable and professional? And that's a big priority for me. I want to make sure that, you know, we're not just talking about the money, but once people come in and they decide to be part of Team Duval, are we standing up for them? Are we supporting them? And are we making sure that they've got a great quality work environment every day that they come to school?
I thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Let's turn our attention to the safety of schools. You know, we watched a tragedy in Uvalde, Texas. It rocked everyone's world, honestly, all over the country and all over the world. We thought about how safe our kids are in the classroom. And, you know, admittedly, there were some mistakes that were done in that case. But let's kind of turn your attention, because I know Duval is kind of looking at some different things to make sure that the kids are safe in their classrooms. In fact, we have a story airing tonight that talks about some of the research that's being done across the country to get the best equipment and to keep kids safe. But what do you think the school board's responsibility is for protecting the health and welfare of students, teachers, and all staff? And, you know, let's talk in general about public safety during a pandemic, you know, the threat of violence at schools or even at a student's home, because sometimes that can spill over into the classroom. You know, I think when you think about it, students were told, you know, you can't bring backpacks the last week of school, and a lot of students were a little startled by that, and you come into a place where you feel like you should be safe, but you just don't feel safe. So how do you, how do you match safety, security, and also have students learn?
Yeah, I mean, Melanie, I wish I had all the solutions for that. I really do. And I think that this is where it's really important to have people that are sitting at the table and on the board that have some good experience working with children that understand our schools and what it is to be in the classroom and the challenges and the responsibility that our teachers face every day that they come in and protect and serve and educate our children. I was really motivated to run for the school board in 2018 after the Marjorie Summons Douglas massacre, because there's a lot of conversation around mental health. And as a mental health practitioner, I felt like the board was going to be making decisions about how to address the mental health needs and the emotional needs of our students, and we needed to be innovative with that, and that's been a huge part of what drives me on the board. That we're not just waiting for there to be a problem and referring to counseling, although I'm super grateful for the relationships and partners we have with our community mental health providers and through full-service schools. But we also need to be looking at early intervention and prevention measures on the front end, ways to make sure that our students are engaged and getting what they need to in our classrooms. The challenge with that comes, like you said, when our children are faced with trauma and violence outside of our buildings, outside of the schoolyard, and they bring those things with them. You know, we live in a community that's plagued unfortunately with quite a bit of violence. And so students come into our classrooms, and we have to provide a nice warm welcoming environment for them. That's really tough when you're talking about hardening schools. I hate the term hardening. Schools should be a nice, soft, warm, welcoming environment for our kids to come into. So I think it's really difficult to try to find a balance. How do we make sure that our students feel safe? That our parents feel like our schools are safe when they send their children to us? And actually ensure that they are safe without doing any more, you know, emotionally traumatic impacting things that are scary, like having to take their backpacks away, for example. You know, I'm really proud of the work we've done with the HalfPenny Facilities Infrastructure, Safety and Security Improvements. We've got quite a bit of that work underway, and we are working really hard to make sure that every campus has the highest quality 21st century safety and security protocols in place, films on windows, fences, lighting, locks, all of those things, things that our kids might not notice as being scary when they come in. Beyond that, I'm a big fan of making sure that we have good relationships with our school safety officers. We've got several different relationships and partnerships with our community police force as well as they come in to serve some of our schools. So I really would like to continue to work to make sure that every school has a sworn officer, a safety officer. We aren't able to meet that goal. At this moment, we work with safety assistants and security firms to fill those roles in some of our elementary schools. And I really would love the idea of being able to get our police officers on every campus so that they can build real relationships with our kids. I think that is a great opportunity for students to see officers in a positive way and to understand, you know, the impact that the police officers can have positively in their lives. So I think there's a lot of ways that we can be working to help support student safety. Of course, there's the hardening aspects, and there's arming our officers and having those folks on campus, but certainly the emotional, mental health, and behavioral issues are critically important to me as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And kind of to build a little bit more on the important issue of creating safe spaces for students, what do you think our public schools, what role do you think our public schools play in creating safe spaces for students to engage in conversations about race and identity as a part of their educational experience?
You know, I really don't know that this is something that I think our educators should be leading. I think we're at a time and place where students have a lot of thoughts and opinions, and there's lots of different clubs and organizations. And I'm okay with student-led conversations and having adults there to help facilitate those. But I really think that when students come to school, they need to be learning, that they need to be focused on the basics. With that being said, we have to be able to respond to what they bring to us. So when kids come into our classroom, you know, having been a classroom teacher, you don't stick to the script in the curriculum every minute of every day. You know, things come up, children ask questions, and I want our teachers to feel empowered and trusted, and I want our community to know that our teachers can be trusted to help answer our direct questions with facts and information, and then redirect kids back to a lesson, because that's what they're there to do is learn.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's kind of, let's talk about the disparity by race in our schools. We know that we've made significant progress to really laying the playing field so that all students have access to, you know, the same things. But there still are some issues when it comes to student discipline, access to gifted and advanced courses and educational outcomes, so all students have access to quality, the equality in these areas. So let's talk first about what you think Duval County Public Schools has done well here, and then also what remains to be done.
Remember that the superintendent is really responsible for making sure that she implements programming and strategies for educating and managing our schools, educating our students. And I just want to give her props, because I think she has done a really good job setting a high bar and high expectation for all students. When we are really relentlessly focused on making sure that students are getting standards-based instruction, that they are at grade level or that we are bringing them to grade level and not setting a low bar that is achievable and feels good, but doesn't really move them academically. I think she's come in and the staff have really set some good expectations for students, and that's helping students that might otherwise, you know, have been pigeonholed into not performing or permitted not to perform as well as they have the potential to do. You know, they're, they're having gains, and so I'm really proud of the gaps that we have been able to close, the achievement gaps across demographics. So students with disabilities, our low-income students, and our diverse students. I think that there's been a great progress there. As a board, it is important for us, we are always looking at disaggregated data. It is really important that we have a good sense of where do those deficiencies continue to exist and holding the district and staff accountable to how are you working to improve this? And we just looked at some data recently. I was really proud of District Two. We've got great performance across the board and our reading scores, but you could still see that there are some subgroups that are really struggling. And so, you know, in the workshops, I like to push those issues. I think that it's incumbent upon us as board members to know what our students are facing and then to ask the district to step up to that challenge and to meet the needs of all children across the district regardless of backgrounds and code.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And do you believe it's important to prioritize implicit bias and anti-racism in yourself and in your position on the school board?
So I do think that it's important for us as leaders, whether it's on the school board or, you know, adults in life and setting examples for young people in our community, that we continue to challenge our own biases, that we reflect and think openly and honestly and authentically with ourselves about what gets in the way of us being able to see multiple sides of every situation. I think we're in a time and place where unfortunately, things are super divided. Things are very polarized and political, and we've got this message that somehow empathy and seeing things from another person's perspective is bad or that if you feel bad or don't like, you know, a piece of history, that somehow we shouldn't talk about it anymore. And, you know, I think that that's really unfortunate. I don't think that we can continue to grow as a community. I don't think we can strive to be a more perfect union unless we're really willing to confront some of the hard stuff. You know, I don't, I'm not a person who likes to shy away from hard things. I really lean in, and I'm willing to be vulnerable and authentic, and I think that my challenge is around me to do that as well.
Thank you so much. You know, one of the district's guiding principles for a strategic plan is to provide a culture and climate that improves academic, social, and emotional development of all students. This can be a little challenging, because everyone kind of has their own definition of what that means in their household. But what are some ways in which the school board can support that principle equally for all students regardless of what they believe?
Yeah, again, I think it's important to think about what is the role of the school board here. So I think for us as a board, we are looking at where are we investing in programs? So the district and staff, they look really critically at what is needed, how we can move students, and how we can meet the needs that may be beyond academic so that they can be successful in school academically. They bring those items to us, and we look at how is this working? Is this successful? Show me how that's impacting student outcomes, and that's where we get to make decisions about how we want to invest the public tax dollars. So I think it's really important that we continue to improve culture and climate and that we are looking at how to make sure that our students have their developmental needs met as well as their academic needs met. And as a board, I'm asking questions to find out how these programs are really doing that for our kids and if this is how you want to invest our money.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So sometimes school board candidates may have limited hands-on experience with our schools, whether as a parent, volunteer, teacher, or in some other capacity. Can you tell us a little bit about specifically what schools in DCPS you have worked with or in and what role you were in and what impact you made and how you were affected by the experience?
You know, this is a funny question. I can tell you that I grew up in Arlington. I am an Arlington girl. I went to Arlington Heights Elementary, Arlington Middle, and I graduated from Terry Parker High School. And when I came back to Jacksonville after college at UF, I was a teacher at Terry Parker High School, and then for a little while over at Ed White High School. I taught English, and I loved that work. But when I transitioned into counseling, I first came back to the district, DCPS, as a counselor in the Pride Program, for that's for severely emotionally and behaviorally disabled students. And that was such an incredible experience, but I worked in, gosh, I think every single Pride unit in the time that I was with the district there and got to see some real challenges, not only that children go through, but our educators trying to do that work. It's tough stuff. When I transitioned out of that role, because the contracts changed with the district, I went over to full-service schools. And when I was with full-service schools, I worked in primarily the Northwest Quadrant and then over in the Paxton area. And then I moved over to the Inglewood area when contracts shifted around again. That's the beauty of nonprofit work. Contracts shift, and you have to be agile. And so I have really had the honor and privilege of working in more than half of the schools in Duval County during my time as a counselor, as a teacher, as a student, with families, with kids, and with our educators, helping meet the needs of our kids.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's talk about community engagement. You know, this is something that's really important. Anytime you have something controversial, the meeting's packed with people, and it can go on for hours depending on what the subject is. But I believe as a journalist that it's important, you know, for your parents and students to be engaged all year around so that they can understand everything that leads up to those kind of big decisions that, you know, affect them all. So as a board member for your specific district, what type of activities will you implement to keep your constituents knowledgeable about policies, programs, goals? You know, what have you done already that you find is effective and maybe some changes to maybe get people more engaged on the front end of things?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great question, Melanie. Thank you for that. This hits home with me more than ever, because my little one is going to start kindergarten this year in our Duval County Public Schools. And so, you know, I, I think it's so important to make sure that our parents have access to our schools, to their teachers, to their building leaders and administrators, to our school board, certainly, and our district staff. So, you know, I think there's a lot of ways that parents can get engaged and involved, whether that is through parent organizations like the PTA, sitting on SACS, joining some of our review committees for a variety of things. But more than that, I think it's really important that as a board and as a district, we go to where people are. And so since I've been on the board, the district has made it a priority to be at all the CPAC meetings to make sure that community members are engaged and understand what's going on. We worked with JPEF in developing our strategic plan to bring other community stakeholders, a variety of stakeholders to the table. We hosted community meetings in every single school board district. And not only did we host these meetings, but we made sure as a board that we went to each other's. We have a really functioning board right now, that even when we disagree, we understand that we are working for the collective good of the district. And so we try to go to them, and when we do that, we go together. We, I just had a chat with the superintendent, with Board Member Pearson and Board Member Cooper Daniel. And, you know, it's great, because we get to get that filtered, unfiltered feedback from, from our parents. I love doing the chats with the superintendent. I also like to go to community events. So I go to PTA meetings, I go to SAC meetings, I go to the play at the elementary school. And this summer, in fact, in July, I'm going to be hosting some meetup playdates every Friday at 10:00 AM across District Two for parents to come and hang out. We'll let our kids play, and we'll have a little chat, because it is important to me to be accessible to the community. I've also worked really closely with both the Beeches Chamber and the Jacksonville Chamber during my time on the board, so we're hearing from the business community, and we can keep connected with the needs of our business community as well.
Awesome. Well, now we're going to turn to some questions that we've received from those who are tuning in tonight and those that have might have been sent ahead of the forum this evening. The first question I'll ask, which is about the importance of the job of the school board and hiring the superintendent. And what is your plan if Dr. Green decides to leave?
Let me make sure I jot down my notes, because I don't want to forget anything. You get on a roll, and then you forget. Okay. So Dr. Green has shared with the board, and we just renewed her contract, that she is going to be retiring soon. So we are, we are glad to have her until she retires, and we are so proud of the work that she has done with us here in moving Duval County Public Schools forward. But the single most important job of a school board is to hire the superintendent. So when Dr. Green retires, it'll be really important that we have a knowledgeable experience board that has great relationships with folks around the state, and we can work to recruit and get the information we need to ensure that the superintendent that comes to serve Duval County Public Schools next is high-quality and cares about our kids. So for me, top three priorities. Number one, that they have a good proven track record of being financially responsible and taking care of taxpayer dollars. We have a big budget. Everyone likes to remind us that we have a big budget. We have a big budget. Everyone likes to remind us that we have a big budget. And it's super important that our leader can manage, understand, and be agile with ensuring that our public taxpayers or tax dollars are spent wisely. The next thing that's really important, of course, is that they've got experience and understand education, that they understand how to move kids, and how to make sure that kids are getting a high-quality education that meets the standards. And Florida's a little different. So, you know, making sure that the superintendent understands the public education system here in Florida is also really important to me. And then I would say lastly, somebody that's committed to Duval County, somebody that knows or is willing to know the community here. You know, Duval's a little different. We like to say it's easier here. I also tell people it's different here. You know, the consolidated government and the way that we are so big, but so many big hearts, and so many partners that want to work together for our Duval County Public Schools. We have to make sure that we have the superintendent that's invested in our community and willing to bring people together for our children.
Thank you very much. And let me just ask, because there is a question in the chat. Someone was wondering, does she renew her contract for three years? When will that retirement take place?
Yes, it was a three-year renewal.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Marion, we tried to get that one answered for you. Let me ask the next question, because we do see a lot of charter schools popping up in our community. Someone wrote, they were wondering if you'll encourage parents to keep their students in their neighborhood schools rather than transfer to a newly opened charter school. And then also, in the end, how do you balance the funding for these schools and make sure that your neighborhood schools don't lose out, if you feel that's important?
Yeah, you know, I think that this is a really important question specifically for Duval County in this moment. I sit on the Duval County Public School Board and would love to continue to sit on the Duval County Public School Board. And I think that sometimes people don't realize or unaware that charter schools have their own governing boards that set policy and direction for charter schools. As a Duval County Public School Board member, my priority is making sure that our public schools are great, that our students are successful, and that they're a choice that families want to make, that they feel good about that choice. So, you know, I am always going to be a public ed fan. I also fully understand and respect and appreciate that every family has different values and different needs. And if they're not having their needs met in Duval County Public Schools, first I want to know why, and I'm going to try to work on making that better. But certainly, if they want to go to a charter school, that's why school choice exists. That's why we have these options available to folks. I do think that we are getting to a place, unfortunately, in Duval County, however, that the market's a little saturated, the education market. And this causes a lot of ripple effects, not only because there's one pond, right? We've got one pie of funding, and now we have to divide it more and more and more ways. But it also impacts things like our teacher shortage. We have more positions available in our community than there are teachers for. And we have charter schools that come in and that are able to pay there because they're part of big charter chains that are paying higher rates for their teachers than our traditional public schools. So, listen, I'm not afraid of competition. Bring it on. But I work as a Duval County School Board member to make sure that Duval County Public Schools are an excellent choice, and that we're taking care of the students and teachers in our schools. And I think we have to be careful as taxpayers and vigilant on how our tax money is being used as charter schools continue to expand and expand. Because that's going to come back on the quality of education and the budgets of what's happening in our traditional public school classrooms.
I want to ask a question that, I guess, relates to that last part of what you were just sharing, and also related to what you earlier shared about the importance of the superintendent being really good at managing the budget as well. And it's about DCPS of the board and how you handle transparency, both in terms of finances and also in terms of the curriculum.
Yeah, I think that that's really important to us as a board. We constantly are talking about making sure that we are transparent with the community. It is actually required that there is fiscal transparency prominently displayed. I'm pretty sure is the language and statute, so that all of our public records, as far as finances go, are available to the community. You can go right now to our Duval Schools website and find financial transparency. They've got a dashboard out. And so I think that when I first started on the board, A, I'll say our website was like struggling in 2018. We've had a full overhaul of our website. I think we are continuing to refine that. The superintendent loves a dashboard, so we've made lots of dashboards over the last few years. And that is all an effort to make sure that we are being as transparent as possible. The information is there. We have auditors and auditors and auditors. The only other position that the school board hires besides the superintendent is our internal board auditor. So this auditor reports directly to the school board and oversees finances and operations of the district, and works on audit plan. That website is, if it's not out now, it's in the making. I worked really closely with our auditor as the chair of the school board last year in making sure that this was a website that was available and that people knew how to access these financial documents. The auditor general comes every three years to the school board. And in the off years, we have an external auditor. We contract with a company called MSL that comes in and audits. All of the auditing is available as public record, and it's available on our website. So we try to be as transparent as possible. The Half Penny Dashboard, if you haven't been to DuvalSchools/half-penny and checked out that dashboard, that's incredible. That's an incredible piece of software. And we are giving people down to the penny how much is being invested of their tax dollars into those projects. So, you know, I hear this all the time, transparency, transparency. And we are trying. We want to be transparent. The information is there for you. The other thing I want to mention, during my chairmanship, I actually set up a special committee to explore policy for an audit advisory committee. So these are experts that we appoint from outside the district. I have to give props to my appointee, Julia Hahn, from the University of North Florida, and the role that she plays on our audit committee. We've just got that stood up. And so now we've got folks from the community providing another extra layer of transparency and oversight because we aren't all experts in auditing and in finances. That's not my expertise, but I work really hard to learn as much as I can. And I want to make sure that our community can learn as much as they can in a way that's really digestible. And then as far as education or curriculum goes and transparency, all of that is available for you as well. I think we've got some new legislation that's going to make sure that all of our book lists and things like that are available for folks on our website. And I think that that's really important. We invite parents to sit in on curriculum adoption, community members to sit in on those things, to review items and textbooks before they ever come to the board. The district handles that process. And I think it's a really good, important process. We have lots of ways that folks can get involved. And of course, if you ever want to see any piece of curriculum or content in a textbook, that's available. We make that available to folks, and I think we should, and we have to keep doing that.
Let's continue down that line of transparency. You know, the governor just signed House Bill 1467, which requires school districts to be transparent in the selection of instructional materials, including library and reading materials. You know, he said, "In Florida, our parents have every right to be involved in their children's education." You know, this is one of the school board meetings that certainly was heavily attended. You know, some would say that sometimes there's misinformation being expressed in chat rooms and at kitchen tables when it comes down to that transparency. So let me ask a question that was posed by one of our viewers tonight, and it's kind of two-part. One was concerned about how much this is going to cost, the additional reporting requirement? How much will that cost the district? Is there a value in that? And then also, what is the process? How will the school board handle a parent who says, you know, "I demand that this book be banned through this new house bill"?
Yes. So I don't know that we know exactly how much it's going to cost yet, but I asked that exact question in our last workshop. We are looking at setting up the media specialists that are required to review all books that come into our school. It's going to require that we increase our personnel staff. So there's going to be some additional costs there. It's really cumbersome. Every time a teacher wants to get a donation, for example, from a classroom library, it's all going to go through the media specialist. And although it's cumbersome, let me, I will be very clear in saying, I think it's strange that we don't have a rating system for books, right? We have rating systems for TV. We have rating systems for movies. I think it's perfectly reasonable and acceptable to make sure that we have folks looking at and approving grade-level and age-appropriate content for our students. With that being said, our district has been doing that. So a lot of our process won't change, other than needing to have more people because we'll have to do more screening. So I don't know exactly what the dollar amount is going to be, but that is a conversation we just had at the workshop. You know, it is a requirement that didn't come with additional funding, so we're going to have to come up with how to make sure that we are doing this timely so that our kids have access, our parents have access to books. At this point in time, what's happening is that, listen, this is new legislation. So I am going to tell you, to the best of my knowledge, what I think is happening. Right now, they make a report. It is reviewed. Everything that gets reported goes to the State Department of Education. So there will be a full list of anything that's been, you know, submitted as questionable. And then our staff reviews that, takes a look at it, and makes sure that it's, you know, appropriate and valid to be there. Did I miss any parts of your question? I feel like there was something else.
I think you got it. It was just if somebody does actually say, "We want this taken out," what does that process look like?
Yeah, they're going to go through on the district staff, and there's a reporting process, and they're working out the details to that, but everything does go to the Department of Education at the state level as well.
Okay, thank you. And I just do want to answer one question Shannon's asking, was April Carney invited tonight? And the answer was yes, and she had access, and she chose to not attend this evening. But she's still welcome to come at this point. We still have some time if she wants to join us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Well, we have a question that's come in about the rules of the comment period during school board meetings, and whether you would change the rules and let parents of district-run schools speak first? And if yes, how would you make sure the first 30 minutes is devoted to those parents? The question from a viewer.
Yeah, so we actually have had conversation about our public comment policy over the last couple of months. And we are looking at taking up that policy in public hearing in our July meeting. The, I'm trying to think who was the point person. I don't want to say the wrong name, but one of our board members really took that and looked at policies across the state, worked with our Policy and Compliance Department to really get more in alignment with what other boards are doing across the state, and also a little more closely aligned to what's happening with what our city council does. So we will be seeing some changes to our public comment process because we do think it's really important that folks that are coming to talk about items, you know, on the agenda have an opportunity to be heard, and then we hear them before we make decisions on those items on the agenda. So it'll shift up a little bit. I don't have it memorized right now for you, unfortunately. But you can take a look. That should be published for review to the public and check that out. But it doesn't specifically address only Duval County Public Schools' parents speaking first. I can tell you that.
Okay, I think, Rachel, if you want to just double-check, it does look as though we have covered most of our questions, would you say?
Yeah, absolutely. And at this point, we do want to give you two minutes to offer some closing remarks. And then we will provide a few closing remarks as well before letting you all go for this evening. So Ms. Anderson, two minutes to provide closing remarks.
Sure. I mean, first, I'll just start by saying thank you again to JPEP. Melanie, thank you so much for being with us. Thank you to everyone who joined via Facebook or Zoom because I think that this is the really important election. We are looking at what is good for our public schools. And I believe that public education is a cornerstone of American democracy. We have an opportunity and a responsibility to make sure that the person who fills this role gets along well and cooperates and can work together with our board and our superintendent to move our students and our communities forward. I believe that I had the experience to do that, not only because I've been sitting in this role for four years, and I have worked really hard to work with integrity and authenticity, and dare I say transparency, but also because I have a background that's invested in children. I've been an educator. I've been a counselor. And I think that when we look at really important issues that we need to be tackling in these upcoming years, experience matters. I am a mom. I feel passionately about making sure that our families are engaged, that our community is engaged because I am a Duval County resident, and I want to see our schools move forward and our community continue to thrive. I'm really disappointed that my opponent wasn't here tonight. I certainly am questioning, you know, who should you serve? We know that there's been a lot of politics, a lot of ugly and divisive politics. And unfortunately, I think her brand of politics isn't what this community wants. We want people that are going to be working together for the good of our students, that put kids first, and not Washington-style party politics. So I would just ask folks to do their research. You know, if a board member or a candidate isn't willing to come forward and talk to you now, what makes you think that they're going to be listening to you in the future? And it's important to me that I am available. I have been available. I'll continue to be available. And I thank you so much for listening and then being with us tonight.
And Rachel, I know you'll have final words, but, you know, I just want to kind of piggyback on that. You know, we've seen an unprecedented move by the governor, really getting involved in the local school board races, saying that he backs certain candidates. And again, I would just encourage all of the people who are listening to share this and to educate yourself and make sure that, you know, who you are voting for, that they are truly aligned with where you stand, and that they truly benefit all of our children, and that it is something that you believe in. So we just can't be handed things, you know, not saying I'm for or against anything that he said, but we do need to take it upon ourselves to just do a little bit of extra research to fully understand what we're doing. So thank you so much for joining us. And again, I would definitely say do your research on all the candidates. So thank you.
Excellent. No, and thank you. Thank you so much again, Melanie, for co-moderating this evening. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for taking this time to answer questions from the community. And on behalf of the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, I just want to thank you all for being a part of this important community forum tonight. It's been JPEF's honor since the very beginning, when our organization was established, to offer these forums as an opportunity for the community to hear from candidates running for school board. We will continue to do so. In case anyone was not on at the beginning, I do want to say once again that we did also invite Ms. April Carney and our discipline. She wasn't able to join us tonight, but do want to also encourage everyone to learn as much as possible before the election this upcoming August about both candidates for the District Two seat on the school board. I want to make sure you all spread the word as well to others within your network about the importance of voting. Kids cannot vote, unfortunately, and they're the ones who are receiving the services that our schools provide, but they're counting on us, the adults, to elect one of the candidates running for District Two to represent them on the school board. Early voting is from August 8th through the 21st, and the primary election is August the 23rd. Thank you again for joining us this evening. I hope you will join us for the District Six Candidate Forum, which will be hosted on July 16th, also at 6:00 p.m. And we will have a second mileage rate referendum on July 21st. You can register for either of those events at JPEF's website in the advocacy center. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Good night. Thank you.